Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting the order of the Mayor and Commissioners for Tuesday, June the 9th, 2015. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer, please?
Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of the town of Rising Sun. God, I want you to continue to guide this elected body in a Christ-like way. I want you to continue helping the town of Rising Sun. And I pray for the McAllister family that recently lost their business, along with all of the tenants that lived above Bigfoot. I pray that everything will work out with them and that they will be able to find new homes, if not back into the Bigfoot area. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Next is approval of minutes for the May 26, 2015 town meeting.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes? Thank you. Next is a reporting of executive session from May the 26th, 2015. Town Administrator, do you have that?
Yes, I do. The Mayor and Commissioners met in executive session on May 26, 2015 at 7:27 PM on the second floor of Town Hall. The members present was Mayor Marion, Commissioner Arthur Rees, Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Warnock, and Commissioner Scully. A motion to open the meeting was made by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Walker. The motion passed four to zero. A motion to hold an executive session was made by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Warnock. The motion passed by a vote of four to zero. In accordance to the Mayor and Open Meetings Act, the meeting was held in order to discuss personnel and to consult with staff consultants or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The topics discussed were the Chester Waterline Agreement negotiations and police personnel. Persons present at the meeting were Calvin A. Bonnerberger Jr., the town administrator, a motion -- we don't have the tail end of this. I didn't pull page three out of the -- Motion was made by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Scully. The seal of the minutes of the meeting. That motion passed four to zero. A motion was made by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Warnock, to leave executive session. That motion passed four to zero. A motion was made by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Warnock, to adjourn the meeting. That motion passed four to zero. And the meeting was adjourned at 9:31 PM.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Next on the agenda is our public presentations, and it is Mr. Mike Shober. Commissioner Walker, if you want to introduce them, you can.
Mike Shober is from the engineering company CDM Smith. They are the engineers for our wastewater treatment plant. And he is here to give us an update on how that is going.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. It's been about a year now since the town hired Wickersham Construction to come in and complete construction of the wastewater treatment plant. I'm sure you're all aware, there's been a lot of activity down there over the past year. And I'm here to report, the project remains on schedule. It's the same schedule that they had proposed when they started almost a year ago. Construction is approximately 85% complete. All the structures are up, the buildings are up, all the major equipment has been installed. There's even grass growing that even needs to be cut. It's probably a little bit too high by now. So that's going all very well. The remaining work that needs to be done is mostly electrical in nature, doing all the pooling, all the wiring, and things of that nature. In about two weeks from now, the contractor's going to start trucking in the biological seed that's needed in the orbital process. That'll take about a week to truck in everything that's needed. Once all that seed is in place, we're going to switch over from the lagoons and start pumping all the raw sewage through the plant. So within, hopefully, about two weeks, the plant will be up and operating. After that point, there'll be about a two-month testing period, which the contractor and the equipment suppliers have to show that their equipment does work and whatnot. But during that two-month period, the contractor will be continuing to finish up all the other things that he needs to be, you know, have done and expects to be done in late August, early September. In order to accomplish all this, the town recently hired Miller Environmental to be the plant operator. Miller Environmental is represented here tonight by Mike Pointer and Doug Connell. And if you would like, they like to say a few things on the operation of the plant and how it differs from operating a lagoon, because it is a much more sophisticated plant. And they'll be on-site in the next two weeks when the seeding starts and when the startup begins.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Mike Pointer. I'm the CEO of Miller Environmental. And thank you for trusting in us and giving us the contract to operate your new facility. I know it's a big investment for you all, and we're going to do our best to take good care of that investment for you. With me tonight is Doug Connell. He's an operations manager of the company. He'll be in charge of this project for us, and he'll have a couple of things to say about the operations of the plant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I guess I'm going to try to make as basic as possible. We don't want to get it too complicated. Lagoon system, basically, that you have now is a basic treatment system designed to do BOD, tail spotted solids, and that's pretty much it. The premise being that water comes in, solids fall down, clear water or cleaner water discharges out into the tributary. The new system that you have is a little more complicated than that. You'll have headworks where they'll take out rags and debris, some of that stuff out of the water, so it's easily treatable. Goes into an orbital system, oxidation ditch, if you will, where it's treated fully for nitrogen removal, BOD, again, TSS. Then it'll move to a next treatment process, which is a final clarifier that will take out the remaining solids. In between somewhere there, we'll probably have a carbon source that'll help treat some of the nutrients, which are nitrogen, phosphorus, again. And basically, this system is designed to take you into the future, so you won't have to do any more -- well, I'm not going to say any more. MDE is control of that, but basically, you have a stay art facility that I have 28 years experience from 10,000 gallons a day to 42 million gallons a day in treatment facility. So my plan initially is to be on-site probably five days a week until we can kind of tune in the plant and make sure it's running properly. And then after that, a few days a week, you know, I'll be in. We'll have an operator that's certified. Also, that'll be there five days a week. Weekend operator, that'll be there, that's also certified. And we also have part-time positions that are certified operators that will come in and fill in as necessary. Any questions?
No. We thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, guys, for the update. Moving forward into citizens' input. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? Hearing none, we'll move forward into staff reports.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. During the period of May 11th through June 9th, we responded to approximately 361 calls for service. Most notable was a weekend where Commissioner Warnock had the pleasure of riding with one of the officers and saw firsthand how out of control things can get in the Harry. He witnessed a subject attempt to flee from police, where we had to end up tasing someone. A lot of interesting things occurred while he was riding with the officers. And I believe it opened his eyes a little bit as to what we endure on a daily basis. Yes, we do not taze people on daily basis. However, we do have some very unusual occurrences that happen when we're out there dealing with the public. So if you get a moment of free time, just ask him how his ride-along went. I'm sure you'll be entertained. And with that being said, I'd still like to invite the rest of the board to go on a ride-along with the officers, just to see what they experience on a daily basis. Mr. Walker, you have that experience, so it's not necessary for you to go, but if you'd like to, we'll put you out there also.
I have no desire to be in a police [inaudible].
I guess you've had your fill. But yeah, that opportunity's out there for you. I gave you some statistical data for law enforcement officers in this county that in your leisure, you can take a look at. You'll find it interesting how many officers are on duty and the amount of area that they do have to cover. So when you get some time, just take a look at that. Also, we received a grant, the state's grant for police protection, state aid for police protection. It's approximately $36,000 this year. That'll help offset some of the costs of having an officer. In addition, I've submitted a grant to the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention for the body cameras that we spoke of. I know I gave you an estimate of what it would cost after we got beyond the legislative process, and I've submitted for that full amount. I will also submit to Legit for their version of a body camera grant, and hopefully, we can get this all taken care of without costing the taxpayers, well, costing the town that much money to get the project rolling. We have also been installing components for a new radio system. That system allows for officers to be tracked as to where they are in a county. It's a countywide system. When dispatch comes out, they will find the closest unit to the call for service to reduce that response time. That's already underway. We're getting that into the vehicles now. All but one vehicle in the town has not, has been done. I have one in my own that need to be done. In addition, we're upgrading the report management system to go on a countywide system where we have larger amounts of data that we can use to help, you know, close some of the gaps in communication and some of the gaps in finding people. With that being said, that's pretty much my report. There has been no new trends to talk about that really stand out. Is there any questions?
Chief, you said that this is a county system for the tracking of our vehicles. Are you going to be able to track the vehicles yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. What it does is we're dispatched through the county dispatch system at Department of Emergency Services. They will have basically monitors similar to that, much larger, that they can see where every patrol car is within the county. And when a call for service comes out, whatever car is closest will be the first car sent, if it's available. Although, we are restricted to the town of Rising Sun. If there's a call that comes out, it's an emergency call, if we can assist, they may send us, but we won't be the primary car to respond. So, but they will have the access, and yes, I will have access to all of that information.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Town Administrator, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, there's a couple of things I want to bring to everybody's attention. The first thing is the fire at Bigfoot. As we're all aware, there was a pretty nasty fire this past Sunday that knocked out a very important business for the town of Rising Sun. I was asked this question in terms of what role do we play when people see us out there? And the fire department is the one who typically calls for a building inspector to come out. And the reason for that is, I mean, it's twofold. One, we have the advantage with the building inspections being done in-house, to also coordinate the town's efforts to help the fire department deal with the issue that they're dealing at, dealing with. So Commissioner Warnock was out there. We had all hands on deck with the police department. Yes, and Commissioner Walker was out there. We had all hands on deck with the police department. And one of the roles our building department plays is securing, in this particular case, an electrical inspector to come out, a third-party electrical inspector to come out and assist the fire marshal to some degree with what should have been in place, what could have possibly happened, and then to also assess the damage to some of the other surrounding properties, because as we know, it was, I don't want to put my foot in my mouth and talk like there's some final determination of the fire, because that wouldn't be fair to the fire marshal's office. But there were impacts on other buildings above and beyond just Bigfoot themselves. So we did a series of inspections in the surrounding properties to make sure that there were not issues. And we did find some interesting things. If you're familiar with your electrical service coming into your house, it gets typically grounded to your copper water pipes in your house. We found at least one instance where the grounding clip actually was burned right through. And so you're basically talking about a pretty good chunk of metal, or in this case, it was, this particular clip was aluminum. It was hot enough to just dissolve that clip, so that the grounding rod was just hanging in the basement. Now, that's not necessarily going to cause a fire with what had happened, but it does put the house in a very dangerous situation when they go to energize the property again. One of the things I'm also going to bring to the attention of the board is that we have some rental properties that just raise a whole lot of questions and concerns about the condition of some of those properties when you really get in there. And the fire company has become very concerned about them also, because we've got to imagine, you know, anyone that was out at that fire, or just look at any of the pictures. If you were standing by Ace Hardware, there were times when you were afraid to take a step because the smoke was just so thick, and you had to watch where you were walking. Imagine being inside and having to go down a set of steps or up a set of steps. And in some particular cases, the basements are just littered with stuff. I mean, old hot water heaters that were taken out at one time. We found steps that the last four steps were just gone in the basement there. And so having been a firefighter for many years, my heart goes out to these guys, and I do get concerned about when you folks saw those guys just heroically going into those buildings with all of that smoke. It's dangerous when they're going into a nice, clean area. Imagine them going down into those basements with just stuff strewn all over the place. So that's something that, you know, I've always been a proponent of saying that every day that goes by, you're just one day closer to that horrific accident, that everyone steps back and says, why didn't we do something about this? Why didn't we know? You know? And people want to assign accountability for that. And we do have some issues with the conditions of some of our properties in town here. And there are some resources which we can employ to help assist with that. And, you know, that's a subject for another day, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So after the fire is put out, our department makes an assessment on the structural stability of the building, guys. In other words, doesn't have to be torn down immediately. In this particular case over Bigfoot, the exterior shell of the building was not something that appeared to be something that was going to fall on somebody, but obviously, the exterior of the building had to be boarded up so that people don't become interested in what's in there and start going inside. Someone asked me whether or not the building department would require the property owner to tear the building down. The position that I typically take on that is that before anybody could build any building that's been damaged, we would make them get a structural engineer's report from a third-party that they're going to come in and assume the liability of whether or not the building is safe or not. So whether or not that building will be torn down or not, my experience tells me it would probably be better for the building to be torn down, so they can do some things differently and rebuild it in a manner that would be a little better all the way around. But that's really going to be up to a structural engineer to determine whether or not it has to be torn down or not. The other thing we've been doing with the fire company over the last couple of weeks is Knox Box Locations, spelled K-N-O-X. And Knox Box Locations are a little brownish with a red lid box that are mounted on the outside of buildings. And whenever there is a fire, obviously, if it's a fire where the fire department responds and flames are coming out, they're going to take the front door off to try to get in there. But there are many calls that they go to where they're not looking to just do property damage, but yet they still need to get into the property. And you get that a lot with your stores. Imagine them being dispatched to an automatic fire alarm at Big Lots in the middle of the night, and the fire alarm's going off. Maybe they hear the sprick or gong ringing, which means something is flowing. They have a choice. Do they do maybe $4,000 or $5,000 of damage to those doors in the front and take out, you know, create all that damage for something that's really not that big a deal? Knox Boxes enable the property owner to put the key in the box, and only the fire department has a key to. The owner doesn't even have a key to the box. And so there is one master key that the fire department carries. The town doesn't have that key. The police department doesn't have that key, just the fire department. Excuse me. So when they respond to an incident, they can open up that box, get those keys, and they can get into a building quickly without doing unnecessary damage. It is something that's been talked about as being a code requirement in the international codes, and it has become a code requirement in the 2012 building codes. But it's typically for whenever you do renovations or new construction. It really makes sense for the town to get out in front and advocate for some of our businesses around here to invest in that Knox Box, because it can make all the difference in the world for the fire company being able to do their job efficiently. The other thing I want to talk to you about is for USDA grants or requests for financial assistance that we're currently in the process of managing. And unfortunately, all these deadlines are occurring in the month of June, so that's why we're backing up with some of our other responsibilities, because we're trying to meet these deadlines here. We did successfully submit a grant application for $60,000 for an economic development and community revitalization study. That's a study that we've been talking about for a couple of years now. And we did put it out to bid with a much larger scope, and we got prices back that were just not feasible for the town to be able to move forward. So you've heard the Mayor and Commissioner Warnock talking about our sustainable community designation. We were going to require that third-party person who got the RFP to do the economic development to do that sustainable community, and that cost alone was averaging about $40,000. Since that time, the Mayor Department of Planning and the Mayor Department of Community Housing and Development has graciously stepped forward and provided the Mayor, Commissioner Warnock, and the staff with college students owning their master's degree to help with the sustainable community. And they have taken on a lot of the legwork in doing that. And we are going to be coming to you guys at the next meeting for a resolution for us to accept that sustainable designation, which provides our businesses and property owners with a lot of incentives to be able to do things with their businesses. Some people that have heard facade improvements, Commissioner Scully, you're familiar with it, where facade improvements are where you can get grant monies or tax forgiveness from the state if you come in and make the front of your business look nicer. Well, those businesses can't get those monies if the town doesn't have a sustainable community designation. So there's a variety of things that we can do to help our businesses, and one of them is that sustainable community. So in juggling all those balls, we're eliminating the $40,000 we would have had to pay a consultant to do, which is bringing our economic development study initiative down significantly, which is enabling us to apply for grant money to get to do that economic development, while also getting the sustainable community designation, which will open up doors to a lot of our businesses to improve on what they are doing. So there's that one grant. You folks are all aware of the fact that we have been in discussions with Chester Water for many years now about getting a water source from them. We're in negotiations with them, and there's a lot of moving parts on what the final cost is going to be. But we need to apply for financing from USDA on that also, and that deadline is coming up on June 30th. So we have a lot of consultants and other experts in the field all moving these pieces along, so that's been a real-time consuming thing also. The other grant application is for Ryan Dry. And this is an application that you're all familiar with what happened with Ryan Dry because of the condition of the piping, the condition of the road, and we had these pretty significant failures of the road and the water system. And you've heard me talk about this before. We can go in there and spend a couple hundred thousand dollars repaving the street, but we have pipes that have reached their life expectancy. They're all 30 years of age. And so when we start talking about $15 to $18 million of infrastructure needs in the future, although we've got to be as diligent to keep those costs down as possible, we also have to be smart about how we're spending money. So the fear is spending a couple hundred thousand dollars to repave the street to turn around and have 30-year-old piping fail in the next five years is not good use of money. And so we're applying for grant monies for that also. We have a preliminary cost of anywhere from $500 to $750,000 to redo the entire street and redo the entire water lines in there, including Sunrise, and also replace the connections of people's, where people's service lines, resident service lines connect to the main itself, they would all be replaced also. And then in addition to that, you've heard us talk, and this has been going on for many years, if some folks can remember brown jugs of water being brought into the town, because the town has anywhere from 10,000 to 15,000 lineal feet of undersized water lines that not only are they undersized, but they're very old. And in addition to that, they're in a configuration that creates, let's call them dead spots, they're not dead ends, so that whenever you have large volumes of water flowing in those areas, it turbulates the water, and the brown water comes out, and we get complaints. We got a lot of complaints over this fire, over this past weekend. People were great, they understand why, but they still had their laundry ruined by brown water. So we're looking to apply for grant money for that also. The estimated cost of that repair right now is about $3 million to replace the water lines, because in addition to the water lines, we need to repave the streets, because we're going to be tearing the streets up. And just to give you an example on why I think we have to do it right this time, over the last couple of months, you folks have heard about the water leaks out here on Main Street. And a good example of maybe not spending money as prudently as possible is that the town upgraded the water lines on Main Street under Streetscape and put 12-inch lines in. And they put 12-inch lines down Walnut Street. They put 12-inch lines down Queen. And they ran a 12-inch line down Haynes or Pope, I don't know which one it is, but they left the 4-inch lines in the street. And they left the service connections to those 4-inch lines. And they left the configuration of valving the way it was. And they left the configuration of valving the way it was. So that contributes greatly to when we have a water main break out here, it's on the old 4-inch line, and we have to shut the entire system down. So even though we put these larger lines in, obviously there was a decision, well, we can't afford to connect that all in, I don't want to say the right way, but connect it in a way that's more efficient, and now we're paying the price for that years later because the system is not performing the way it should be performing. So we have that grant application. In addition, our public works guys, as usual, are out filling potholes and cutting our own grass. But one of the things we've been doing over the last couple of years is we've been very aggressive about cutting grass at vacant and abandoned houses, especially ones that are bank-owned that are in foreclosure. So if you see any of them that have not come up on our list, because the only way we notice them is when the grass starts getting high. And so we have about 15 properties right now that our guys are cutting every two weeks, and we are invoicing that. And when the houses finally sell, we are making the people at the settlement table pay the town back, or if it doesn't sell within a year, we are putting it up for tax sale, and the bank that owns the property is being pressured into potentially losing their property if they don't pay the town. So we're, we're shelling out a lot of manpower hours every year, but it's only for a 12-month window. We are getting that money back. And again, that's something that we're trying to do differently than has been done in the past. And the other obvious thing is the budget. We are running behind on getting the budget completed. The good thing is, is that the directive from the elected body has been to pull the tight, the reins tighter, and, and that's a good approach to take with all our infrastructure upgrades that need to be done. To some degree, I'm waiting for department heads to, to determine what they can live without and how they can squeeze in their area. So conceptually, the budget is about 85% done. It just not, has not been put in to those spreadsheets that we do to carry all the numbers through. So we will be getting that done in the next week and a half so that we can present that publicly, so people can get a chance to comment on that. And that completes my report. The elected body, you have your financial reports in front of you. Patricia Wagner is still recovering from her major surgery. She was going to attempt to be here. The first agenda had her coming, but she probably came back to work a little bit too early, so she was feeling under the weather today. So she'll get the financial reports next month, at the end of June, I should say. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Historical Preservation Commission.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. We'll move forward into the mayor's report. My report is very brief. I wanted to say a big thank you to the Rising Sun Chamber of Commerce and to Vince Salmon, Norm Hunter, and Bud McFadden, as well as all the volunteers that volunteered their time at Sunfest. It was a great event. A lot of people came out, and I'm excited to see what they will bring in 2016. Today, I visited Rising Sun Middle School. I spent most of my day there, actually, in four different classrooms with four different classes. Ms. Tricia Miller, who is an English teacher there, invited me to come down and sit in a roundtable. I absolutely loved it. The kids were able to ask me whatever they wanted to ask me. They were able to tell me what they would like to see in town and what they would like to see from Rising Sun in the future, what their concerns were, whether it was a pothole that I told them to speak to Commissioner Althanreth about, or a new slide that they want to see at the parks, which I told them to talk to Commissioner Warnock about, as well as making fun of the shoes that I wear and whatever personal questions they decided to ask. But I had a great time talking to them, so that was a great event, and I thank them very much for having me out. As well as, I was asked by Principal Edwards about two months ago to speak at the middle school graduation, which is this Friday. So I'm excited to be the guest speaker there. And then I will head to Rising Sun High School, where they have also invited me as a guest of honor. So I will be there as well to watch the high schoolers graduate. As you can see in this room, we have some beautiful artwork that is up. I was lucky enough to get from the Rising Sun High School some art students who were willing to put up some photos in here. This is our new Walker Display System, which our Arts Council is going to be using. They did install this artwork for me. I was able to get it from the high school. But I'm excited to, many of you may have, may remember that when I was commissioner, we did a walking gallery in the stairwell. We used to post the photos on the walls, and then they kind of got torn up, the walls themselves got torn up. So we're going to actually have a system like this that's going to be able to post more artwork, not just the ones that you saw on the wall. And that's going to be installed probably in the next few weeks. So I'm excited to see that. And I'm excited to have the Arts Council come and use this room to do events that they're planning, so that's a great thing. I also wanted to say a big thank you to Chief Peterson and to Rising Sun Police Department for helping me out with Mayor for the Day. I finished my last two students at Conawingo Elementary, and we had a great time doing Mayor for a Day. The kids absolutely loved it, and I have been asked by Calvert Elementary to do Calvert Elementary next year. So in addition to Conawingo and Rising Sun, I will add another elementary school that I will go and do an essay contest for Mayor for the Day, so I'm excited about that. Moving forward into any old business this evening. Any new business? I do have something under new business, and I believe it's Commissioner Althanreth who brought me, brought to my attention. The next meeting will be around MML, our annual conference, and myself and Commissioner Walker will not be here. It is at the board's pleasure whether or not they want to continue to have a meeting without myself and Commissioner Walker, or if they would like to cancel the meeting, it will be up to them.
Well, I think with everything we've got going on, we, we should have a meeting, especially since we're pushing up against July 1st for the budget.
Yeah, I think we have to, actually.
And quite a few other things we got going on, so I think we are going to need to have a meeting, and fortunately, it's the week before anybody needs to go down for the convention. So I, I recommend we, we have the meeting the next week.
I mean, I'm fine with that. I don't know if Commissioner Walker or the board would possibly entertain maybe moving the meeting to a, a day that we can attend.
What's wrong with the 23rd?
Yeah, the 23rd is not.
That's not the week of the convention.
It's the following week. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Then I guess I was.
So we're okay.
Althanreth, okay. No other new business? Into Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Althanreth.
Okay. Calvin, do you want to go over this KCI report, or you want me to just go ahead and?
Yeah, I'll give you a quick technical overview, and then you and Commissioner Walker can take it from there.
If you could kind of explain to everybody what we're about to go over here for those who don't know.
The board has in front of them a proposal from KCI Technologies. And when I was speaking under my report about USDA grant applications, one of the downsides of doing grants is that the agencies that want to consider you for funding obviously have to have information in order to make a decision. And that information would be something like the scope of the work of what you're going to do, the projected cost that it's going to be, and then in this particular case, any type of environmental impact. So whenever you use a third-party firm to some degree to do your grant application, you're always going to have some cost associated with determining that stuff. In the case of federal government funding, there are requirements that go above and beyond just our staff being able to do these grant applications. And they have specifically what is called a PER, which is an acronym for Preliminary Engineering Report, and then an ER, which is an Environmental Impact Report. And so what you have in here is a proposal to do a preliminary engineering report and an environmental impact study for the, the USDA grant application to replace the water lines in Ryan Drive and to repave the street. And this is sort of mission critical to us having any hope of getting any grant money. We have to provide them with this technical data. Now, the overall price, I didn't, I didn't add it up to the dollar.
It's 23,590, 23,590.
So you see on the third page, there's the estimate for the preliminary engineering report at 17,470, and the estimate for the ER report, the impact study, at 6,120. To put this in perspective, when we did the preliminary engineering report for the sewer plants, that cost the town over $30,000 to do. I'm actually surprised that this preliminary engineering report came in as cheap as it did. The environmental impact study, when we did it at the sewer plant, that was about $15,000. We're getting a little bit of a break on this because the environmental impact study is something that quite frankly looks for old Indian burial grounds or anything that's going to affect the environment. Because this is Ryan Drive curb-to-curb, and it was already approved once before, and you're taking something out and putting something back in, the scope of what you have to do is much smaller. So although $6,000 is still a chunk of change, it's not as bad as it could have been because it's, the, the impacts are already accepted by USDA. It's not as being as significant. So that's the technical review.
Okay. And one other thing to mention, you know, we met with KCI, Commissioner Walker and myself, because this is a combination of water piping as well as road surfacing. And we met with two gentlemen from KCI. They suggested we have a conference call with representatives from USDA and to see what they would need and see what we, as much as we could work them down. And this is, comes out of that, that conference call we had. There was one other thing that it looks like may not have been added into this was a, a direct expense for $460. So that'll take the total for this, these two engineering reports to $24,050. And we have to have this in order to submit this to USDA for funding to repair Ryan Drive. As Calvin said, there's no point in going in there and paving the road just to have to dig it up maybe next winter for failure, more failures to the water pipes. And if anybody's been up on Ryan Drive lately, it is a disaster as far as how many holes we've had to dig to make repairs to water lines, as well as checking to see what the integrity of the curvature of that pipe coming up to Ryan Drive from Sunrise Circle is. So I'd like to make a motion tonight that we authorize KCI to proceed with the preliminary engineering report, environmental report for approximately $24,050.
Second. Any discussion?
This is, I just have a question. This is for, okay, this is the work that needs to be done for our grant application. And who, who's providing the grant? What are we applying?
We're trying to go through USDA.
It's US.
Low-interest loan, correct? Or a possible grant?
Loan or a grant?
You, you apply for financing, and they determine what portion is grant and what portion is financed.
Okay, that was the USDA portion.
Yes.
This could cost $300,000 to $500,000 to do this.
That, you answer my question. So the, because some portion of it may be a grant, but the rest of it will be financing, low interest, we have to do this anyway to even qualify to cover the expense of it. So I'm, I'm fine with that.
Two technical things I want to bring to your attention. Number one, if, look, USDA, they, they can never say to you, yeah, you're going to get the money, but this is an ideal candidate for this. They're very interested in helping us, with us. The important thing to note is when you get it, this retroactively gets absorbed by the money. So it's not $24,000 in change that you pay, and it, you know, you never get reimbursed for it. As part of, out of the grant or the financing, you do get it back. It covers back this. The second thing I want to bring to your attention is, we did have conversations, if you recall, I talked about another $3 million needed for the other water lines. We're going to have to go through the same exercise again. So the first question is, well, why don't you do the two together? The concern is we don't know what the environmental impact study, how long it will take to do all of those other areas in the town of Rising Sun. So we didn't want to run the risk of not being able to get the approval at a time we matter because, remember, blacktop plants close around Thanksgiving, if not sooner. So we've got a couple of months of work done, and we didn't want to have the project held up, you know, by combining them together.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pass this. Thank you. A couple of other things, some information. This week, I received stage two of the roadway and sidewalk and street evaluation from KCI. As you remember, here's stage one, it's 65 pages. Stage two came in yesterday, 66 pages. So Calvin and I will be going over this, and then we'll meet with KCI again to see if there was, you know, anything we need to add. We'll also bring in our Public Works Director and anybody else from the board that wants to sit on in this and get some information. This is section two of something that we approved earlier this year for close to $30,000 that the work is getting done. And this, stage three, which would be next, will be to combine these two and give us a priority of streets, sidewalks, and possibly any utility, storm drains, water that we don't know about because we're so concerned with all the other things that have jumped up. These will show us the hidden things that are happening, so we'll be working on that next. Another thing that we've got, Commissioner Warnock and I were talking about this weekend, part of a grant through Will Mapco and the county was bicycle racks. We received free of charge 14 bicycle racks. Our obligation will be to use parts and labor to install them. So a lot of the places that they need to go are our new dog park, our new veterans park, D.D. Richardson Park. So the other day, gave Commissioner Warnock some of the paperwork to also go over so we can make sure that we stay within the guidelines of where they need to be. So that's, that's a good thing to have, especially as much as bicycles cost. Everybody wants to be able to put them someplace and lock them up so they don't walk away while you're at one of our many parks enjoying our amenities. So another thing, just like the mayor said, thank you to Norm Hunter and Vince Salmonson and everybody for Sunfest this weekend, especially Mr. Hunter, who rode us around in his Mustang golf cart. We almost overheated it, I think, and throwing candy at everybody. It was a blast. Big turnout at Sunfest. I talked to a lot of people about what's going on in the town, and a few things I heard that, that they really appreciate that town meetings now are about town business getting taken care of and not the, the old show that it used to be with our old mayor always worrying about what was going on in his world. So a lot of people, you know, I kept saying, come out, come out, and they're like, we watched the videos, we hear what's going on, and we're glad that business is getting taken care of, you know? So it was, it was really good to get out and meet everybody and talk to a lot of residents. I was there all day. It was a great time. Commissioner Warnock was out there directing traffic. Everybody should go. We got to work on him because he had us all going in, head into each other.
Yep. I'm just sending people up, and I didn't realize that we're all stacking up.
Yeah, they're all coming in like this. So planning and zoning meets next Monday, 6:30. I hope everybody's going to be there. We're going to continue to work on subdivision land use. Last meeting we had, we had a resident in who wanted to do some work to their home, and we didn't get a chance to work on that, so we'll be getting back to that. Unless somebody wants to do more work to their home, please come in.
I meant to ask you the status of our planning and zoning board. Are all our members?
We're still short one member.
Okay, okay.
So, and we need somebody.
Two members?
Right now, it's just one. We had a conversation Saturday, so that possibly is changing. So right now, we're actually one.
Okay. The next thing that I forgot to mention under streets, the chief just reminded me, is to remind people, if, chief, if you want to say, about the Color Fun Run, that's going to be on Saturday. We are expecting upwards of 5,000 people that are going to descend on the town of Rising Sun, starting at around, probably around 9:00 AM on Saturday, and they will be here for a good portion of the day. If you want to talk about the roads that are going to be affected, that would be great.
As the mayor said, we are expecting a very large turnout. Last year's event drew approximately 3,500 to 4,000 people. This year, we're on pace to draw more than that. We had no problems last year. We had one individual complaining about- We had one individual complaining about having to sit in Martin's parking lot for forty-five minutes. We're working on a manner to allow the participants to run in heats where there's going to be a break in between. If there's someone that sits that long this year, it's not because of us. It's going to be their choice. So we're going to work on getting people through town as best we possibly can. But in order to help us out, avoid town. I mean, if you're not going to participate in a run, choose a different manner to travel around Rising Sun. We're going to use just about every available parking space, every facility in, in the town to park. And it's normally a, a great event. But we are expecting a large turnout this year.
Good?
Yes, ma'am.
What roads?
I'm sorry, I skipped right over that.
You know, where some of us live in town, it's like, okay.
You're going to be fine. Not yours. We're, we're going to be, the event starts here at Town Center, the municipal parking lot. Roads that are going to be affected are North Queen Street, East Main Street, down to Ryan Drive, to Dawn Drive, Colonial Way, over to Biggs Highway, and the runners will come right back into the center square here. So you're going to see some effect on roads like Pearl Street, West Main Street, Cherry Street, just because of the volume of people coming into town to park.
I know most of the way to get around, just wondering how far you went down because I go to my son's on Biggs Highway, and it closes Colonial Way. So I'm going to go, I have to go.
Stevens Road to Pierce Road and over to Biggs. Yeah, I've gotten several phone calls from residents about graduation parties. We will work with you the best we can, just be patient. We'll get you to your destination. Again, just be patient. Okay. We're going to have the event in separate heats so we can get traffic moving in between.
How, to what time can people expect?
Starts probably, we're going to have volunteers and vendors. They are going to be starting at eight AM, and they will be descending on the municipal lot there to set up everything. And possibly the town square could be affected a little bit because they're going to be starting to put things out. And then after that, the race starts at ten, so probably from, what, nine o'clock until the after event goes to two, I believe? Two or three?
Yeah, the, the event ends at two. So you're going to see some cleanup with vendors after that. But what you'll see is North, North Queen Street's going to be shut down earlier because we'll have so many people in and out trying to register and vendors trying to get in. So you're going to see that close probably around seven AM. East Main Street and all the other streets aren't going to be affected until after around eight forty-five, nine o'clock.
Have the business owners been notified exactly?
I personally walked through last week and gave them a message about what was occurring for Sunfest and this event. And I anticipate going through again Thursday and handing each one a letter.
Because last year, I had heard, because I know people, I mean, different businesses, they were complaining because they, people couldn't get to their business.
Right.
And they were having some issues with that.
Right.
Because they didn't, they said they didn't know enough in advance and things like that.
So we, we've took on, took that on as a challenge. This year, we're going to get the information out. If you didn't notice, everybody looked at their phone the same time. Yes, I just put out an alert this early to make sure everyone's aware of it. And I'll continue to put those out and annoy people for the next, you know, twenty-four hours.
And I think it's worth noting, last year was the first year of the event. I think it was.
There's always growing pains. And I'm, I'm really excited that this year I've, I've found that the planning process is a lot more streamlined. They know what their mistakes were last year and they're trying to.
But when you have two events back to back on weekends like that.
Oh, yeah, puts the stress on us.
Yeah.
Some of the shop owners kind of give a little.
Absolutely.
You know, that, that helps bring a lot of people into town. And like, like Travis just said, it's kind of a, been a blessing in disguise. They didn't know that it was going to be this popular. We were lucky enough to be the first ones to have it last year. We're lucky enough to have it again this year. And I, I think even though it's created a little bit of inconvenience, the amount of business that it's brought in has outweighed any inconvenience these business owners have had. If, unless they've got a business that doesn't take people, you know.
I think there's a, a give and take with that. I think some see it one way, some see it another because of their type of business.
I, I think if it goes to another community, we'll be sorry. We need to make it work here.
I absolutely understand that. I'm not bashing anything, I'm just saying what I've heard. Because some of the businesses don't lend themselves to just every day. You know what I mean? They, they have different type of business. That people are trying to come and go to, they're not participating in the events. They're just trying to get from point A to point B, most of their users. And when you have a weekend, back-to-back weekends of shutting down the center of town.
Some of the biggest businesses affected were the hair salons. They have weddings and graduations and so forth. And they're scheduled in advance. Yeah, but again, we work with them. In the past, we've had some issues with the clientele not getting there, but we've learned to work with each other. Prior to the events, I give them a route of travel to, and, and we're going to have it again this year. Last year, we had a funeral directly in the middle of, we are expected to have another one this year, unfortunately. And what I did is I provided them with a route of travel to get their, you know, family members and, and clients to the closest points that we can make one cross and into, you know, their facilities. But again, we're going to work with them as best we can. The organization that we've partnered up with in this, they bring me about a hundred volunteers. And the good part about it, and many people don't know, is many of those volunteers are law enforcement officers that I've worked with from around the state. And they know exactly what we want, what we need, and how to get the job done. So the parking lots, they're in the parking lots, parking people. You don't have to worry about a lot of problems in parking lots. If they're at an intersection assisting an officer or a fire policeman, they know exactly what they're doing. So we, we tend to have managed it well for the first event. I think we're going to get better because it's our second time around.
We worked really hard to have a lot of meetings. I've met a lot with you, I've met a lot with Desiree Davis and the organizers to try to, one of the things I got across to them was, you know, you're not going to be able to please everyone. As many people that might love the event, there's going to be a lot of people that may not like the event as well. So you have to cater to those people as well.
Well, like you said, you have people in the community, they're trying to get, unfortunately, it's graduation time. The graduation party's last weekend, you have this weekend. People are trying to get the hair salon, people are trying to go get their car fixed, they're going to get car parts, they're trying to go pick up something for their graduation parties. Right, you're not going to please them.
And there's, there's only, there's only two ways that we can, that I'm trying to work hard at, at doing. And number one is notifying them in enough time that hopefully they can go.
That was the main thing.
Early enough. Make sure that that's down on, you know, on social media. It's been in the papers that this is going to happen. And work with the chief that if someone does come the day of, make sure that they don't sit for long in traffic. And then we can get them through.
He's doing the right thing, going around to businesses. Not all of them are from here, they don't read the local paper, they're not on Facebook. I think you're doing the right thing, going around and saying, hey, this is what's happening. And that's all I heard was, can we have some notice? You know, and I think that's been accomplished this year. But it's unfortunate that the, the events are back-to-back.
Yeah, I will say, one of the, one of the things I brought up to them was, I said, is there any way we could do this another weekend besides the weekend they chose? And they wanted to do it on that weekend. It came to the organizers and what they felt would be the best way to handle this, and that was the date for them. That's what they chose. We did it earlier last year, but unfortunately, because Elkton did their color vibe, that kind of, they didn't want to do it around the time that Elkton was doing theirs. And then they did another Way of Life Outdoors program they did in Elkton as well. So they wanted to hold off and do Rising Sun's Way of Life event till this upcoming weekend, so.
It, it's a little bit more scheduling than meets the eye because you have an event from every weekend, starting in April throughout the county, that you tend to compete with. Or you may overlap. So they did choose the best weekend they thought possible. And we're going to do our best. And again, in part of my speech, when I go around to speak with the business owners, I actually challenged them to actually have sidewalk sales or get outside and, you know, draw people into the businesses. A lot of them don't want to do that. They figure the people can just run by and like, well, they're parked somewhere. They're parked close enough, and if you've got good salespeople, they'll come in and see what you've got for sale, so.
I've worked hard to let people know. I, I don't want them just to run a race and leave. I want them to explore Rising Sun. You know, if they want to come and visit one of our parks or walk around the community and, and explore, I want them to. I want them to enjoy Rising Sun and possibly go get a pizza in the downtown area or Mexican or whatever.
But they have an event after where they serve food and they have.
Correct. They are, they are doing three food trucks this year, and the food is going to be for sale. And then one, the, the officials also said they're going to make an announcement that if the, the food that's going to be in the food trucks doesn't cater to their liking, come visit the downtown area and get food there if they want.
My last thing is, they've also clued me in on some of the, the new technology they're going to be using for dispersing the different colors. So expect to see your law enforcement officers that are dressed in white shirts may have rainbow colors at the end of the day.
This year, there's going to be a lot more color than there was last year.
So, you know, we had pink police cars and blue police cars, but expect it this year.
They have some cannons that they're going to be putting in and it's going to be hitting.
Way to steal the show there, Mr. Mayor.
So, thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Yes, yeah. No, it's pure dye. No, I'm just kidding. Sorry about that, Commissioner Scully. Commissioner Scully?
No, I don't have a report this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walker?
Again, I want to thank Mr. Schobert and Mr. Canel and Weiner for coming tonight and telling us how the sewer plan is going. So I don't need to add anything to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Warnock, do you have a report this evening?
Yes. There's a, a number of things that have happened in Parks and Rec over the last few weeks. Two of our Eagle Scout projects have been completed and signed off on. So I'd like to congratulate Matt Banero and Adam Parrott on their successful completion of their projects. They will be, they went before their, or I assume since one turned eighteen a few days ago, and the other one turns eighteen tomorrow, that they've completed everything necessary to, to become Eagle Scouts. And hopefully, we'll, the mayor and I, and I guess whoever else will be attending their Court of Honor within a, a few months, I hope. And Adam's been busy helping Robbie and, and here soon, we've actually wound up with another scout, Silas Scott, who's going to complete the section of boardwalk between Robbie's, Robbie James' project, which is the boardwalk or the platform that's currently under construction. All he's got left to do is put the railing up. And then Silas will come in and connect the boardwalk from the bridge that Adam built over to the learning platform. So the dog park's really coming together. We're, we're not too much further away from having that project completed. I've had multiple meetings with Brian Lightner, Cindy Taylor, Rupert Rosetti, and Greg Stickler discuss wetlands maintenance and invasive control at the Triangle Dog Park. So we've been busy down there and, but their plan is, Brian and Cindy are working on a, a plan for the first year to just understand how the wetlands are working, understand what plants, they're actually very detailed maps of what's growing where so that they can understand how it's growing and growth of certain invasive species. We have probably about three or four invasives we're focusing on down there. So working with that, tying to that, Rising Sun Elementary School's fourth graders came out last Tuesday and learned about the, the wetlands and the watershed, and they helped plant native plants and remove invasive species from the dog park. They also, as extra credit, they sang Happy Birthday to the mayor when he came down. And I made sure that each group of them had the opportunity to sing Happy Birthday to the mayor since it was on his birthday. On Friday, Brian Lightner, Rupert Rosetti, and Public Works Director Ron Thomas and I went to Centerville and picked up about a hundred trees donated by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. About seventy-six of those trees were planted over at, by about thirty very ambitious tigers from the Rising Sun High School AP Environmental Sciences class in just under two hours at the direction of, of Mr. Lightner and Greg Stickler, their teacher from their AP Environmental Sciences class. So a big thanks to Brian Lightner for reaching out to, to Carrie Decker from DNR to get the trees donated to the town and teaching the kids the proper way to plant the trees. Thanks to Brian and Rupert for working with Mr. Stickler to get the students to the park. And, and I believe the mayor also worked with Principal Ann Galrich to make sure that they had the transportation necessary to, to get to the park, so. And then thanks to Carrie Decker at the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for arranging the donation of the trees to the town.
And it wasn't just, you think donations, and I thought, I hate to say this, but I thought donations, I thought kind of scrub trees or just, you know, things that weren't really nice. But there was all kinds of different species, they're beautiful trees, and they certainly were not cheap. They were definitely beautiful.
We actually got them from, Queen Anne's County has their own nursery, and they operate at a very low cost, apparently. So they, they basically just get enough to cover it. And DNR paid for the trees from Queen Anne's County. All we had to do was pick them up, and there was a guy, Danny, down there, I can't remember his last name. He was their, he's their nursery head down there. He's a one-man department. But he, he was a great guy. He helped us load it up and pick out what would be good and, you know, talked about like, you know, what would be good in the wetlands versus areas that aren't as wet. So that was actually, it looks great down there. I mean, there's trees everywhere down there now. I think the park's pretty well coming together. So the, the, we're getting close to being into maintenance mode on that park. It shouldn't be too much more going on construction-wise. Of course, you know, as the, the mayor and Commissioner Alth and Reith alluded to on Sunfest, it was the Chambers Twenty-Sixth Annual Sunfest. In addition to, you know, Chamber President Vince Salmon's, also Vice President Tom Wilson, Norm and Carol Hunter, and Bud McFadden, which, he was also on the Parade Committee along with Bob Lucas. And then Entertainment Committee, Shelley LaSheer and Jim Gibney. And then Tom Foxhall from West Nottingham Academy drove the little West Nottingham Academy shuttle bus around all day. And then, of course, West Nottingham Academy for letting us use the bus. And then Cecil Trashford, doing a great job keeping the event clean. I'd like to make sure we issue, offer our thanks for another great event. This was actually the most vendors they've ever had. And at four o'clock, we had to ask people to leave. I don't think we've ever had to do that before. It was with the One-Eyed Jacks there, it, it just, the event just kept going on. And people weren't really interested in going, they were interested in listening to music. So finally, I'd like to invite everybody to the Arts Council, Rising Sun Arts Council has their first of, of a few second Saturday events this weekend after the Color Fun Run. At five PM, there'll be a free concert at Didi Richardson Park until about eight PM. It's going to be acoustical and vocals. I forgot the name of the entertainers playing, and I should have wrote it down, but I don't have it with me. But there's, they have two or three entertainers coming out. I invite everyone to grab dinner at one of the many restaurants there in the area. There's, there's a number of restaurants there within walking distance of the park. And then to come over and enjoy some live mu, live music on the green, so.
Seth Tillman at the Conde Nast.
That's it. Thank you, Jane, for filling that gap. With that, that's my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One thing I will add, the Commissioner Warnock forgot to put out. We are working on the final moving the park schedule. Hopefully, it will be done within the next couple of days so that we can get out and notify our residents that this is what's going on. I do have, I spoke at a couple of meetings before about a event calendar for the rest of the year. Along with that moving the park schedule, it is my intention to release that event calendar so residents will be able to know far in advance what's going on and what we're going to be doing for the rest of the year. So is there any other business to come forward the board this evening?
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.